Pray that we can do whatever we can from our direction to help. I know many people are. I see loads of hay heading that way and different things, and it's good to see people reaching out to others. And I'm thankful that I'm in a county that's like that, have a home like that, where people look out for one another. Just continue to watch over us. I pray for our commissioners as they have their, do their business, they use wisdom and your guidance, and we'll just watch over every county department as they go about their business. I know I saw the road graders out there this morning working hard. So we just pray for all those men and women as they do their work. Watch over us, watch over our families, keep us safe. Lord, we thank you for the love that you give to us that we can share to others. We pray in Christ's name. Amen.
Thanks, Coach.
Okay, takes us to correspondence and organizational business. First item on that will be consider April as Child Abuse and Sexual Assault Prevention and Awareness Month. And present the proclamation to Chrissy Stumble, CASA Executive Director.
Would you like me to go ahead and read it first?
She's going to go ahead and read the proclamation.
Proclamation nineteen dash zero one. Whereas the county of Franklin County, Kansas, prides itself on giving back to the community, contributing to the quality of life among our citizens, and whereas CASA of the Fourth Judicial District and its volunteers represent for the best interests of the abused and neglected children who are involved in the juvenile courts, and whereas there are many children in Franklin County who suffer from some form of abuse or neglect each year, and whereas through a national effort, members of the Franklin County community are encouraged to join together in the month of April to raise awareness for these children who are victims of abuse and neglect, and whereas the Sexual Trauma and Abuse Care Center promotes a culture of consent and provides support to everyone affected by sexual trauma, and whereas this effort and promoting awareness of the neglect and abuse will give abused and neglected children in our community and around the county, around the country, sorry, a chance for a safe and positive future. Now, therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Franklin County, Kansas, do hereby proclaim April nineteenth as Franklin County Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month.
Thank you, Janet. Chrissy, come up, say something.
Good morning. Thank you for having us. I'm Chrissy with CASA of the Fourth Judicial District. This is Rachel with the Sexual Assault Trauma Center. Ken's hiding behind our banner. Like they said, April is National Child Abuse Prevention Month, so CASA and the Sexual Assault Trauma Center, we are partnering together just to raise awareness in our four counties. So we brought our proclamation today to get signed. We are going to our counties to get support just to show the need to end child abuse in our counties. We would just like your support in signing our proclamation this month to end child abuse and raise awareness for CASA.
Do appreciate what you're doing up there.
Yeah. So where's the banner going to go?
We have, banners are going to go in each courthouse lawn, so they will be hung up by the end of this week, and we will have pinwheels with each one of our banners. We'll have about fifty to sixty pinwheels with each banner.
Awesome.
So we will put those hung up.
Great.
Can we get a picture with you guys with our proclamation, please?
Can we make a motion to approve the proclamation first?
If we don't sign it, Chrissy.
I always forget that part.
That's okay. This is pretty much a no-bringer, I think. Okay, with that, I would look for a motion to
Come here. Yes.
To acclaim April as Child Abuse and Sexual Assault Prevention and Awareness Month, and to present the proclamation to Chrissy. I have a motion for a second.
Second.
A second.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
I have to do it. Run up. Yes, and you get a pinwheel. Everybody gets a pinwheel. Ken, can you turn around so I can see your sign, please? Yeah, and then maybe this way a little, and then since, and then you'll cover her up so she wants those. Yeah, everybody come, come around. There we go. That's great. Yeah, let's do it. Chrissy, get in the picture.
I'm in the picture.
All right, still you weren't. Okay, now, you are there. Everybody smile.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You guys get to keep the pinwheels.
Thank you, ma'am.
I think we have a lot of hot air anyway, so.
There you are, lots of spin.
Thank you.
It's what grandkids are for.
Okay, item number two on correspondence and organizational business is to talk about wreaths across Franklin County. Dale?
Morning, everyone. My name is Dale Nadler. I am the co-treasure for wreaths across Franklin County. We are in the beginning of our fourth year. Some of you may, may not know, but we put wreaths out on our fallen comrades' headstones at Christmas time. We are in the process of doing more collecting for more money so we can buy more wreaths. We at present have out roughly twenty-one hundred wreaths, and we have approximately twenty-four to twenty-five hundred more to go. We just found out here just a while back that we have eighteen cemeteries in Franklin County alone. This is private, personal, whatever you want to call them, any, and we are looking for help in getting donations to buy more wreaths for this. If I may? This is, we are now a 501(c)(3), so anything with a fifty-dollar donation or more, we can give you one of these, and it will be signed by either myself or one of the other members. We have now new board members. Kathy Lee is the chairman. Sherry Wright is the co-chairman. June Butler is the secretary, and Barb Netherland and myself are the co-trezors. So that is the reason I am here. We would like to see if we could possibly ask for a donation from you gentlemen and lady, and see if we can get more wreaths going. Just looking for more help is what we're looking for. This is the beginning of the fourth year, if I did not say that. So we're a little ways behind from what we thought we might be, but we're, are soliciting for help. And I don't know if soliciting is the right word, but we're asking for donations.
I had, I do have a question on this. If, if one wants to buy a wreath for like a family member, can he directly buy one for the family member so he knows it goes, it gets there?
Yes, he can.
And what would it cost to buy a wreath for a family member? Is it still the fifty dollars for one wreath, or how would that work?
Well, that would be nice, yes. The wreaths currently, currently cost us right in the neighborhood around ten dollars apiece. That's with the wreath and the ribbon itself. And of course, you know, all donations are welcome, and if you wish to do so, yes, it is up to you. We can do that for you.
Because if you do a standard donation, that doesn't guarantee that your family member is going to get a wreath this year, correct?
Not at this moment, because we are, like I say, we only get twenty-one hundred and roughly twenty-one hundred, and we still got about twenty-four, twenty-five hundred to go. Presently, we try to cover the two cemeteries here in town, Hope and Highland. We had some, we, some went down to Princeton. We had some out here at the Catholic Cemetery out on sixty-eight, and, but we're still a way short. We need a lot more.
Did you get them all picked up? I know there was an issue.
Yeah, we had an issue. When they went to pick them up, they were frozen.
Oh.
So, yeah, we've been picking them up. We've got a good percentage of them, if not all of them by now. Debbie, and I can't think of her last name, at the cemetery out there has been real nice. She gives me a call when she finds some, and I go out, pick them up, and we have a storage container that we've put them in. Later on, after it warms up some more, we're going to go out and clean all these wreaths back up, because they're getting pretty nasty. We're going to buy some more ribbons, because they're not standing up to the weather, and we've still got a long ways to go on that. So, but once we get all this going, and, you know, you just want to keep going. We're not going to give up on it just yet, so.
Derek, or Janet, do you remember, did we do anything on this last year?
The last time you guys gave, you gave two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, I believe, but you also gave grave markers to, to replace some of them that were, that were damaged at some cemetery.
And you had those or something, was, there was something on the grave markers, I remember. Did you have them, or?
I, I always have them at my office. We had some that were older that they needed and that we weren't going to be giving out anymore because that, all of those people that would have been in those wars had all passed away, so we gave out a lot that were not usable to us anymore, so.
What would that come out of, Derek?
You guys have funds in your, in your commission budget for donations.
Was that last year we did that? You said the last time we did it.
I, I believe it was actually at the end of seventeen, like, late seventeen, October, so.
I believe it's been a couple of years since we've been out and asked for any donations.
And, and you say how many approximately is left to go? That, could it be nice to get one on every veteran's grave, that's for sure?
Yeah, we, we're guesstimating at this point, because there's a lot of private cemeteries out there that we don't know who's in them and whether they were veterans or not. We're guesstimating about twenty-four to twenty-five hundred more. Now, we do have, we had a supplier that I was buying them from in back east. Unfortunately, their supplier went out of business, and so they found somebody else, and the price doubled, so we quit buying from them. So now, we are relying on people to tell us where we can find some donations, et cetera. Last few years, we've been going to Hobby Lobby after the Christmas holiday, and what they have left over, they don't want to put back into storage, and so they usually offer us a pretty good deal on them, and so we've been real lucky in being able to collect some of them. They don't work every year, they don't always want to do it, but we have done it in the past. We're always looking for more.
Any comments or questions on this?
The paper that I handed up to you folks up there, like I say, is just for fifty dollars or more. We, one of the chairmen's, people of the committee can sign it, and it will be legal then at that point, if you give fifty or more. Anything less than that, then the IRS says it's not supposed to be done out, given out, so. And we are open. We would greatly appreciate it, any and all help we can get.
There's some other ways we already support also veterans. I know we contribute to several parades and events throughout the county.
Yeah, a couple parades, certainly some dinners, I feel like we contribute to, off the top of my head, I don't know how many, but I, I think there are four or five events anyway that we contribute to already.
It's a good cause and, and all that, no doubt about that. I just kind of, I wonder, you know, as far as the policy, where is the most appropriate use for tax dollars? What, you know what I mean? There's a number of good causes, this certainly being one. What is appropriate use for a tax dollar? I mean, we can't fund all good causes, so where, do our responsibilities start and Let's see, like, the grave markers, maintaining those being a good.
We do get quite a few letters, phone calls, et cetera, from people that do have loved ones out there in the cemeteries that we do put the wreaths on. They are very grateful and very appreciative of what we do or trying to do for them. And I'm sure many of us have family members that have, were in the service and may be buried out here already, or they may still be alive, but unfortunately, we're getting at the point right now that we're starting to lose a lot of our Korean and Vietnam veterans. So we're, we're getting behind every day. There's more and more passing away, unfortunately, and that's why we're out asking for more help.
Right now, or?
Hey, I'm, I'm happy to give you guys data on exactly what we do for veterans. I can, I mean, we can easily figure out how much we annually give to various events, how many of those events there are. If that would make the board feel better, certainly could have that done in pretty short order.
All right. Well, I think at this time, we'll table it and then look at the numbers of what we're already doing on the veterans and so forth, and then.
I just, Janet knows who I am, knows I'd get a hold of me, so let her know, and she'll be, I'm sure she'll be glad to get ahold of me and let me know. All right? Thank you, Dr. Misch, for your time.
Thank you.
May I have that back, please?
There you go. Okay. Takes us to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda that need considered and approved today are tax change orders in the amount of a minus seventy thousand, three-hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars and thirty-six cents. Claim vouchers in the amount of four-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, one-hundred-and-twelve dollars and thirty-three cents. Payroll in the amount of one million, ninety-five thousand, four-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars and thirty-three cents, and spatial claim vouchers in the amount of three hundred dollars. And to approve the minutes from the March twenty-seventh Commission meeting and April the first study session. So I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Should be approved.
Have a motion for a second. Second. Motion, second, Janet.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. Okay, takes us to, did I skip public comment? Yes, I did. All right, we're back to public comment. We got to get the consent agenda out of the way first. We do have signed up, correct?
Mm-hmm.
The citizen desiring to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so at this time. Discussions limited to five minutes, and the commission will not take action or discuss items at this time. Discussions should be limited to matters of county commission business, and public comment is not permitted in regard to personnel matters or on pending legal matters. Items introduced under public comment may become agenda items at a later date.
Jean?
Jean Hurt, two-one-nine West Fourth Street in Linden, Kansas. First thing I want to quickly re-mention is, and Commissioner Howard, you, you knew her, Mary Ann Collins died on the twenty-ninth of March, and what she was to emerald down close to the county line, and her husband was a great deal. And I remember her, after he had died, on her road there, on California Road, years ago. Nobody took care of her road. Nobody brought any rock after her husband died, and I was fortunate to raise enough cane about it, that they brought belly dumps out there and bought gravel along her house. And the only thing she really wanted was, the reason she was so concerned about it was because she always wanted to make sure she made it to the church on Sunday morning. So, you know, it was a great loss. I'm surprised I didn't know that until I saw it the other day, so. So the other thing I want to get into today is, I'm not going to go through roads or anything else out there that I know that are bad. I know they're bad. I know they're all bad. You all know it, too. I'm going to go back to what I stated Monday on the first responders. And it was in the paper over the weekend, this past weekend, how important it is that the first responders are, no matter who they are, but I don't like that the newspaper didn't recognize the small towns of Princeton, Richmond, Williamsburg, and Pomona, because there's first responders there as well. And now to go along with that is, is this. The sheriff gave a, a, a good presentation Monday in his strategic plan, and in his strategic plan, at the end, he had a picture of an officer by the name of Samuel Smith. Now, I had to ask him this morning if I was thinking still right to where that happened with him, and I want to briefly mention this, because it's so true about knowing the road itself. On a first responder, they don't always know what's going on out there and what you're coming to, but it was over there north of Williamsburg, and when you go out of north out of Williamsburg, you, it's pavement, until you get to Jackson. Now, at Jackson, the road curves, and then the highway goes over to Colorado, another mile to the east, and then the road is paved on straight into the north, south side of Pomona. But on that particular day, he had to go out that way, high rate of speed, and when he hit Jackson, right there, there's a lip right there from that curve, and, and he couldn't see, probably see over the top, because the road goes downward at that time, and he went over that at a high rate of speed, hit the road, hit the gravel, flipped, went over the fence, and the car and hand burned there. And I think what the sheriff just, I think, told me it would happen in two thousand eleven. I couldn't remember the exact year. So I emphasize that today is, the first responders, they go out there, and they go down high rate of speed down the roads. Hopefully, you know, there is a program, or there is something that the sheriff and the county can come together with, as he said, that there is, to know what roads are bad, what's going on, because when they go out there at a high rate of speed, you don't know. So that's my emphasis today, is to our first, first responders. Thank you.
Anyone else sign up? Okay. Oh, we'll get back down to the items of business. First item, consider supporting United Way by contributing to their annual fundraiser, IQ Throwdown. Meg?
How are you? So I'm going to, I only have one of these copies, so I just want you guys to kind of pass it along, and then the rest of these, you guys can actually, like, take a look at and keep the packets. So, two, three. I have it right here. Okay, and one for you. Thank you. Okay, so here is what's going on. You know, we serve between all of the member agencies that are under United Way's umbrella. With the dollars that we raise here in Franklin County, we serve about eleven thousand, eight-hundred individuals in order to provide them with everything from a CASA advocate to a, a person who supports them through sexual abuse and, uh, trauma and abuse. The Care Center is one of our organizations, Red Cross, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, our Meals on Wheels program. All of those organizations are currently under the United Way umbrella. Right now, we're about ready to write some checks to all of these organizations in order for them to provide those direct services, and we really need to raise probably another seven thousand dollars to remain comfortable. And so my goal for this fundraiser is to raise ten thousand dollars, just so you guys know. I am sitting at six thousand right now, so this is going to help us meet this next set of checks that go to all these organizations. So we're doing this fundraiser, and it's a real quick one that we're just kind of throwing together, I'm going to be honest, but we're very excited about it. The way that it works is it, is an, we're calling it an IQ Throwdown, but really, it's a trivia game show. And so over at OMA, we're going to have teams of two or three people, get up on stage, and they're going to have two teams pitted against each other, and they'll have to ding in and answer questions, trivia questions. The trivia questions have been provided by Brad Howard, so they are really fun KOFO questions that have been on air. So if folks are listening in, then they actually have a bit of a leg up on some of those questions. Some of the questions are about Franklin County, some of them are about Ottawa, some of them are about our region, but some of them are also sports and history and science and the basic trivia that you would do. We would love the county to have maybe a few teams, quite honestly. One team from every department would be amazing, right, Sheriff? You're on it? So we've, we've actually put a challenge out to the departments already. We've been kind of pushing them, and then Gail is helping me do that as well, to hopefully have them put forward a couple of people from the departments. And you can see that we have the brackets. That's from our sumo wrestling, but we're actually modeling this fundraiser after that sumo wrestling event. So we will put brackets out for the community so that, you know, you would have your Franklin County teams maybe go up against the city of Ottawa teams. We can have the departments go up against each other first and see who wins in those brackets. I know we're going to do Ottawa University versus Neosho County Community College. Like, these brackets are going to be really fun, and we're going to be able to promote the event in this way. Those brackets will also help us earn a little bit of extra money at the event, because people can turn them in for a suggested donation of ten dollars a person for each bracket, and then, and it's, again, suggested donation, but they can also then possibly win the brackets, and if they win the brackets, they get fifty dollars in chamber currency via the Chamber of Commerce. So the Chamber of Commerce is helping us. The winners of the actual competition, they win a hundred dollars in chamber currency for each individual on the team. So if you have a team of two, then it's two hundred dollars, and if it's a team of three, then it's three hundred dollars, depending on how big your team is. And then Hasty Awards has been kind enough, they're doing a team as well, and they're giving us medals for first and second place for the competition. So this will be a lot of fun. It's going to generate a lot of interest in the community, I know it already has. We have sixteen teams signed up now, and my plan is to have about two hundred people at the event. So this will help to promote the work, good work that all of us are doing collaboratively in the community. I know in the past, for the last fundraiser, I believe you guys donated six hundred dollars. The sponsorship level I'm asking you to do today would be five hundred, but of course, that's at your discretion. All of these dollars stay in Franklin County. They do help us provide the direct services necessary through the organizations that are under our umbrella. If you guys have any questions for me, I am happy to answer. It's going to be a blast, and we really want you guys to participate.
And this is on the twelfth?
It is. It's coming up so fast.
It's time there. Any questions or any comments on this? Any interest in this?
No, you guys each want a team, too, right?
I don't know, maybe we could sponsor some of our teams or something like that.
Yeah. I would love that.
Appropriate if any departments or that sort of thing want to develop a team, I don't know, I'd be in favor of sponsoring them.
And if you guys do a sponsorship, then I'm going to waive any sort of registration fees for those teams, period. I mean, just, and however many teams you guys can produce, that will just help to generate more people and more interest, and more people come in, and it's just going to do us a great deal of good in our community. So, yeah.
Are you kind of on the same page, maybe sponsor a county team, some kind of employees or someone wants to do that? Comments on this, Derek?
Oh, I missed something we've done in the past. Annually do, so.
And as she said, this money stays in Franklin County and benefits a lot of different organizations in Franklin County and affects a lot of people. Other comments? Everybody, everybody kind of look up the five hundred dollars? You did mention, Janet, was the number mentioned from the year before?
She said we gave six hundred. I was trying to look that up right now.
That's right, right? Am I right? That's my memory from my.
I think that is right. I think you're right.
And that, that was for the sumo thing?
That was the, I didn't do sumo wrestling last year. We, we alternate events, because we, unfortunately, fundraising is a hard game, and not everybody wants to come to the same event every year. So in the past, last year, we did a mystery dinner, and you guys did six hundred for that mystery dinner, and that was our annual event last year. This is our annual event this year.
So this will be the only event you have this year?
I hope so. I mean, you know, it's fundraising. I would like to tell you that that, that we're on track right now to make all the money we need, but if it comes down to it, I would, I would, I would have to do what I have to do, but theoretically, this is it.
It seems like it might be more fair if you don't, if you're not putting the answers on the radio.
Well.
You know, it seems like, so that.
It's not all the answers.
If people do, you know, if people listen, or, yeah, that it would be more, even if nobody knew the answers, and, you know, they weren't getting that.
So, okay, so what I've been explaining as people sign up their teams, is that actually you can go to Brad's Twitter feed, so you can actually just quickly Google KOFO, tweet the Twitter account, and all of the answers that he has are, that he's been reading off are going to be available. Now, the other part of it is, so if you did miss the show this morning, you know, then you would have that, that available to you. The other thing is, is it's not all of the answers. He's only reading, he started on the, he started two weeks ago, and it's Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays at seven-twenty in the morning that he's been reading, and he's only reading one question at that time. So altogether, it's fifteen, I think it's fifteen or sixteen questions that are available on KOFO in advance that give you a leg up. It's not a huge advantage. It's just. It's not a huge advantage, it's just trying to encourage folks to be aware and listen in and have a little, you know, make it challenging, so, yeah. And my alarm is embarrassingly going off. Embarrassing.
Any else have anything?
I think our department heads should get together, right, and do it. It would be fun.
Okay, if not, I would look for a motion to donate five hundred dollars to the United Way by sponsoring a team on their annual fundraiser on April the twelfth.
Motion to approve.
Motion's your second?
Second.
Motion's your second, Janet.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Chair Howard? Great, thank you guys.
Thank you.
And please consider being on a team.
Okay, item number two, consider offering a dust control program, approving the dust control application form, and soliciting bids for the application of magnesium chloride solution for the dust control program, and waiving the publication requirement.
I just wanted to let you know, Chair, that we have one public comment on this.
Okay, so on Monday when we discussed this, I shared with you the reasons behind the, the proposed rate increase. I still feel that those are valid for this year. And so I would look for a motion to, to raise those fees to the suggested a dollar fifty per linear foot with a three hundred foot minimum, and then the twenty-five dollar administrative fee to help cover the miscellaneous costs that, that we're absorbing currently.
I would just add, for anyone watching, you all know we had a pretty thorough discussion of this on Monday. We're happy to, to go over all of that again, but we discussed it at Monday's study session, so.
On this, it says approve the application form, basically that approving the form is just approving the, the raises on that form.
That's correct. I, I did make a, I added some language in the research that I was doing with the various counties, I read a number of applications, and took some of the verbiage from those applications and added it to ours. It's pretty, I'm not sure there's anything unusual. It describes what the dust control program is, what the limitations of the product are, what our liability is with the application process. It also allows us to, which has been in the, the language in the application from the beginning, if there is a maintenance required of that road prior to the September date that we try to stay off of it, we, we reserve the right to go in and maintain our roads as we, as we deem fit. We don't guarantee that the dust control is gonna be effective. It's a product that, that helps, it doesn't totally prevent dust. It's just a application that, you know, hopefully if the conditions are right, will limit the amount of dust, but it doesn't prevent it totally. The language in the application just firms that up a little bit.
Like Derek said, we had a conversation lasted some time on this, discussed everything pretty much Monday. Anything else right now? If not, I would take the public comment, remember, is it Jean? Jean, five minutes and only on this item.
Jean Hurt, two one nine West Fourth Street in Lending, Kansas. Okay, I got, I got two phone calls last night. Yep, on dust control in this county from the individuals. And they wanted to emphasize today, because when you look at what's on the internet with this, on these documents that Mr. Lee put up there, now I think something needs to be addressed here, because you had a gentleman here Monday, James Wallace, that discussed with you of how he felt about dust control himself. But before I get there, there's some good information here that he put out. Now, I think we've had dust control long before two thousand seven. I remember, right, started in two thousand five. But he says in two thousand seven, we had fifty-seven areas of forty-nine thousand five hundred and seventy-eight feet. Okay? Now, last year, two thousand eighteen, a hundred and twenty-four areas of eighty-eight thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven feet. So evidently, it must be doing something good out there for the people that are paying the price. And as I told you Monday, and as they stipulated last night, they don't mind paying the extra amount of money. It's the preparation of the road, and also the ditches that are important when you, before you put this down, because you don't wanna touch it, you know, if you don't have to, maintenance wise or what, because you're gonna go all the way to what he had stated in this on the internet clear till September the twenty-second. Okay? Now, at Monday's meeting, Chair Howard asked James Wallace about what about the extra treatment that might, you might have had? And James told you guys here, he didn't know for sure whether he did, because he wasn't always at home. So is there an extra cost involved with putting down an extra treatment in an area for a person when he signs up? I don't see any evidence of it on the internet at all. So their question is, what would it cost to put an extra treatment down like by around the end of July and first of August? Because it's gonna probably be really dry. So, and you're also doing two estimates from your bidders that you're gonna have, and one's gonna be in detail whether the wetting of the road as well as without it. And then he makes a comment higher than expected on this wetting of the road. Now, to me, you know, there needs to be some more explanation here. And the other thing is, is this, there's no guarantee it's gonna work he's putting in there. But they wanna make sure, you know, that, that a treatment will not be made for shorter distances in the county treatment life resulting from required maintenance. So, I think you need to address, will you do an extra coating of chemical on an air treated area if they need to be, and is if they do, then what will be the extra cost? Thank you.
For years and years, the county, way before two thousand five or two thousand seven, whichever year you wanna use, prior to that, the county, the process was, we would put down two applications. A few years ago, we eliminated the second application, and we put the same amount of chemical that we did in two applications, we do it in one application. And so we're only doing one application through this process. The, what were the other questions? The, so the.
You also don't offer a second program later in the year.
Yeah, that, that is, that's exactly right. We're only doing this one time, and, and we don't guarantee it. The process is that we will go out and, and grade the roads. I don't know that we'll be doing any ditching work associated with these, but we will prep the roads as best we can, so that the material has the best opportunity to, to last the full season.
And like you said, I know it was, it was found that it was just effective using the whole, full amount in a one-time application.
Yes.
Than it was bringing two times, plus anytime you're gonna have to have the company back a second time.
There's a re-bond.
The cost is gonna go up, and as we talk money, that we've been losing money on this every year, but if the cost goes up, it definitely is gonna cost the people that's buying this more to help cover that cost, so.
The.
It was just effective and cost-effective for them too by doing it this way, so.
The, the bid does stay, we do ask for a, a price for the contractor to pre-wet the areas. That has to be done. If the contractor comes in with a reasonable price, we will utilize them to pre-wet the road. If the price is, we deem it too expensive, we will pre-wet, pre-wet the road ourselves. It's just a way for us to attract cost and, and to get the most for the money that we utilize.
I'd make a motion authorize the two thousand nineteen dust control program with a fee of a dollar fifty per foot, and an administration fee of twenty-five dollars per location, as well as approve the application form and approve the solicitation of bids for the application of magnesium chloride solution, and waive the publication requirements.
Motion's your second.
I would second that.
Motion's your second, Jen.
Mr. Dunn?
I'd like to say that we've had dust control in this county forever. Originally, it was an oil product, and it was eventually banned from being used. It worked great. The best, best dust control we ever had was an oil treatment, but we can't use oil anymore, so we have what we have now. So it's not a relatively new, new thing, dust control, but we've had it forever. And I'm gonna vote yes. I was a little hesitant before because of wanting to bid first and then making a mo, then deciding on the, the motion to do it, but I feel this fee increase is justified, and, and I think I'm gonna vote yes on it.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
I have dust control in front of my house, it's very effective. It makes a huge difference when they put it down, and I vote yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Rick, before we go on to staff reports, I, there's one more item I would like you guys to take up this morning. I've put in front of you an indemnity agreement. This is something we have discussed publicly before. This pertains to the tax sale. I just got this yesterday. This is basically, as you'll recall, we had a discussion about how some of the properties in a tax sale, through no fault of anyone frankly, were unable to get legal service on the owner of the property. In one instance, the owner was a mortgage company who no longer exists, and so how do you get service on something that doesn't exist? But underwriters for title insurance get very, very particular about these things. This particular agreement pertains to another piece of property. We have a builder who purchased the property and, and I believe has a contract to build a house on it, and so rather than being in, you know, an unproductive piece of property, we're gonna get, you know, my understanding is a couple hundred thousand dollar house that of course will help generate revenue for the people of this county. And so this agreement here is basically just the board saying that, you know, in the event that the owner that we were unable to get service on ever comes back and tries to make some kind of claim, that this board will indemnify the title company against any interest that this person has. I will tell you, very unique circumstance, my understanding is this individual has literally waived any interest that he has, which he does not have a legal interest because we foreclosed on it in a tax sale. Nevertheless, he has no interest in this property whatsoever. So for all practical purposes, the legal exposure here is absolutely nil. This is just something that the underwriter wants, and so if you're okay with the agreement, I would ask that you vote to approve it, and then they requested that all of you sign it, and then we'll get this property back on the rolls and productive again, so.
It was like, we, when we discussed this, we had a consensus to move forward with doing this and getting this drawn up, so.
The owner is a contractor. I make my living in that world in the construction industry, just avoid any conflicts or, and I'm gonna abstain from this one, so. I don't have, I don't own the property or have any ownership interest in it, I just, we work in the same industry.
I would look for a motion to accept that, the agreement.
I would move that we accepted this indemnity agreement for the property located at six sixteen South Forest in Ottawa.
Second.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Stay.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yeah.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. Takes us to staff reports.
Speaking of the tax sale, the treasurer and I are finalizing the list of properties for nineteen's sale, and so I hope to have that from her this week. The attorney we contract with is ready to go. As we've discussed before, this tax sale, the city has asked us to include the Cove's properties on it, so it will be a rather large sale, and, you know, the title report costs will be, you know, when you've got fifty-some Cove's properties, it's gonna be a fairly significant cost. Croucher gives us a good rate, but just letting you know, it'll, you know, there will be certain costs associated with this year's that are gonna exceed what the last one was. Nevertheless, the first step in any formal tax sale is you guys will have to pass a resolution, so that will come to you. If not next week, I'm hopeful the week after, but that is in the works, and so. And Janet and I have been working on the budget, we've got department heads currently working on their individual budgets, and, and she can probably talk to you more about that, but we're comfortable with where that is, and looking forward to advancing through that process. And that's all I have today.
Excuse me. Chair.
Just to start off, Mr. Hurt had talked about Deputy Sam Smith. We discussed her before the, the meeting, and I did tell him, I believe that was twenty eleven, I just wanted to correct the record, Sam Smith was killed in that crash, July twenty-third of twenty-ten. And so I just wanted to make sure we got that corrected. Also, this last weekend, there was a, a military-style exercise that happened here in Franklin County, the Civil Air Patrol did a search and rescue exercise that was evaluated by the Air Force. They do that to make sure that they meet the capabilities that they, that, that they espoused to meet, and that, make sure that all the federal dollars that the Air Force puts into that organization are spent properly. I attended that and worked and kind of received a briefing from them as far as the resources and the capabilities that they have, and what they can do for us here in Franklin County. And there's a lot of things that they can do, Civil Air Patrol can do for us that would be no cost to the county, and then a few other things that they provide for us as well. So if that's something that any of the commissioners want to receive more information on at some point, I'd be happy to reach out to them and host them at, at our office to, to kind of let everyone know, but we, I was very impressed with the way that they, the way they ran, ran things and for some of the opportunities that exist for us, so. But then, if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer.
It might be useful information.
Okay.
Oh, is the boiler, I heard it's a little hot in there.
It's a little, little warm in the jail right now, but they, they have the old one out and the new one in. Believe the way that the, I think it was the undersheriff that explained to me, or someone had explained to me, was that we used to have like a Winnebago down there, and now there's a Volkswagen bug. So I mean, there's a lot more space down in that room, and it should be just as productive.
Till the end of the week.
They're working today, and it'll, they're hoping either today or tomorrow to have that project finished up.
Cool.
As you have, Jean brought this out in his remarks, but do you have a, a set program for driver training in far as driving to conditions?
We do, we do, and the statutes dictate that as well. Our policy also dictates you have to drive within. um you have to drive within your ability, the vehicle's ability and for, and the conditions. That's not just the road conditions, but traffic conditions as well. Um, and as I talked a little bit when I presented the strategic plan, we typically historically had sent people, uh, they would get that emergency vehicle driving at the academy and not much after that. We've been sending people out to the academy for the refresher training, but now we're in the process of coordinating with two other organizations that provide that, that have trainers more local, so that we can get more people through that on a regular basis. But the way our policy is written, um, no one should be, if, if the road conditions don't allow for you to drive a certain speed, then you slow down. I mean, that's, and the statutes, the statutes do the same thing.
Remember when I was a first responder with the ambulance service, uh, I've been on I thirty-five going fifteen miles an hour with sirens and lights flaring because it was ice covered.
That's correct. Yep.
You gotta be aware of uh.
That's right. Every driver has, has to, has to.
Do you coordinate with the Public Works Department if there are, with roads that are especially bad?
Yeah, the Public Works Department notifies dispatch and then the dispatch center sends that out to all of us. Um, us, police departments, ambulants, uh, everyone, everyone receives that, receives that information. So if they're working in a certain area or there's a bridge that they're working, any, anything that they're doing on that, we, we are notified on that. And then we receive a message once that road is back up to normal operation. So. Thank you.
I would uh add to what the sheriff mentioned, the, the sheriff's department, the, the officers and deputies uh that are out, they are fantastic about letting us know where there are problems. Uh, so I, I think it's a great relationship. Uh, communication is very good uh so that we can properly uh take care of issues as they arise. Uh, we can't be everywhere and so having the, the sheriff's department out there uh paying attention to things is, is a great benefit also. Uh, for our folks, we've got uh some training coming up this, this month. Uh, we've got uh, there's a gravel road maintenance program, uh, work safety, or work zone safety program, and also a leadership uh class that uh some of our folks will be attending this, this month. Um, and we will continue to look for opportunities um where appropriate for our folks to, to go and uh hear from somebody else uh to bring that information back to the county to, to utilize. We also held our uh, our very first uh blade operator meeting, which we'll be conducting bi-weekly. Um, it's an opportunity for us to uh communicate, uh, to share ideas and talk about best practices. Uh, last week was uh just, you know, setting expectations and and talking about a few things going forward. We'll be able to really use that time to dive down into uh best practices and and really uh sh- share the uh, the experiences of each of the blade operators. Uh, those guys know their districts better than anybody else uh because they're out there every day. They know where the trouble spots are and they uh, but sharing those uh, those experiences with each other will help uh, help each of them. Uh, so they'll, consequently, that's a benefit to the entire county. Uh, next week, I hope to bring you some information, uh, recommendation on uh what we think needs to happen with the, with Nebraska Road south of Marshall and Lebed Terrace in there. We've uh been working on that and and uh should have that finalized and and ready to, to visit with you hopefully next week. And maybe, maybe some information on Rock Creek Road also.
I like the idea of having the uh, the blade operator meetings. I think um, I know that's, it's a job that you're not gonna make everybody happy, no matter how good you are or what you do. But I do like the idea that we put them in some excellent equipment and usually have plenty of access to rock when they request rock on the roads. And it's nice that they know that they're gonna be held accountable for the shape their roads are in.
Nobody cares more about the roads than those nine individuals. There's not a person in this county. Uh, they, they have high standards for themselves. Um, uh, my goal in, in getting them together is to increase the uh, the communication level uh that, and to share ideas and experiences uh and to provide a, a training component. We have uh operators that have been doing this for a really long time and we have uh some relatively um, uh, new folks in these positions. So uh, I, I think um, working together makes everybody better. Uh, and the, the feedback that I got after that meeting was all positive. Uh, they all interacted uh very well. I'm really looking forward to the next meeting and, and the next one's down the line. I think it's gonna be good.
As Derek said, we're working on the budget. We've got some meetings scheduled with some department heads. We've already had um a couple department heads let me know that they're finished reviewing their budget and they're ready to sit down with the preliminary uh meeting with Derek and I for their, for their budget before we bring that to you guys. Um, so we are moving forward on that. Um, I received word from the Emergency Management Department that they no longer have a commission representative sitting on the LAPC Board, which is the Local Emergency Planning Committee. Um, and they were reviewing their agenda for the meeting this, this afternoon and um realized that Commissioner Oglesby used to sit on that board for you guys and you no longer have a representative on that board. And he wanted me to let you guys know that and see if there was any interest um from any of you in serving on that board. I do serve on that board also and other, other department heads, David does. Um, Larry Walrod is on it also. And basically, and it's a board for us to come together and talk about things that we need to be aware of in the case of emergency. Um, we generally um are involved in setting up training exercises for emergency preparedness and things like that. Um, you don't have to, you don't have to attend all of those things um just to be aware of what's going on. Um, the last meeting, I believe, we went over kind of step by step what each of our roles would be if, uh, if there were an emergency. You know, who's going to be able to help, help house people? Who's going to be able to provide, you know, services, transportation? Um, you know, what the Public Works and Planning Departments are gonna be in, in, you know, helping the community after the, the disaster that.
I would be interested in serving on that.
Okay, so our meeting is today at two, I believe, two o'clock today. Yeah, I think Sheriff Richardson, someone also. Two o'clock and it's always in here. Oh, he did change the location. You're right. Sorry. Um, it's at the um jail building and it's on the third floor at the Emergency Management.
We need a motion? Somebody else wants to? Are y'all good with that?
We're just getting ready to get a motion if we need to. Do we need a motion to do?
I don't think we need a motion to, just if, uh, they'll just place IAN on the. On the list to notify.
But that's a caution.
I would look for a motion to appoint IAN to the, what board are we talking, what's the name of this board actually?
The Local Emergency Planning Committee.
IAN to the Local Emergency Planning Committee Board. I have a motion in a second. Two seconds.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yeah.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yeah.
Sheriff Howard?
Yes.
While we're talking, are you, uh, there's a conference coming up this, end of this month in Junction City, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Are you the one that's dealing with that?
I, I can, I've already um signed Commissioner Stottermeyer up to go if anyone else is interested in going.
I'm not interested in going. I didn't know.
What's that date, Janet?
It's. Well, thirtieth. I believe it's the seventeen, eighteenth and nineteenth. It's like the thirtieth to the first, second or something like that.
Like a Monday, or Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday?
I don't have, I don't have, I didn't put that on my calendar.
I think it's the last day of the month and then May first and second.
I just, well, I just wanted to make sure that you know that I, I'm not going. I don't know about anybody else, but.
It is the Kansas County Commissioners Conference and it is at the same time that my Kansas County Clerks Conference um happens. So uh generally, we've not had a meeting on that week because some of you guys have gone to that meeting and I'll be gone that week also. So um, just so you know, I'm, I will always provide someone at the meeting if you guys decide to have a meeting at that, on that time.
You can sign me up for that.
It's two. It's going, are you planning on going to it?
I wasn't planning.
Okay. We got a couple weeks, but we can talk about it. But it appears that there's three of us anyway that's not going. Okay, uh, takes us to Commissioner comments and board reports.
Uh, yeah, I attended Wellsville meeting last week and uh they're preparing to uh put a half cent uh special question. They're gonna have election, submit a half a cent citywide retail tax to benefit the community. Uh, it's mainly gonna be used as for library services and preserving some historical buildings in town and situations. They're making it pretty broad. So just like the attorney said, if, if they cease to have a library someday, it doesn't, the funding just don't quit because, so they're making it broad enough it can be used in several historic aspects. Uh, they have, they announced a new planning director up there now and uh building, uh, Pat Burton. He formerly was Spring Hill and he has come over and uh he started, his last day was last Monday. Uh, I put him in touch with our new building inspector, give him traded-off cards between the two and uh they both wanted to meet each other and, you know, 'cause they're gonna be discussing a lot of things as time goes on. And they're both new on the job, so they, to their area. So they, you know, are gonna get together and talk things over. They do have, he said, he told me they had eight new homes under, right now in the city of Wellsville. And they have ten more laid out to, to go with when, uh, and he says the company that's doing it is really moving along quick and, and they're impressed with the work. The city fathers been up kinda looking, they're really impressed with the quality of home that the, the company's putting together up there. Uh, so that's pretty well. Uh, the only thing I might mention that if you ain't been up there, Select Steel Corp is building a new factory up there and it's pretty well enclosed now. And uh, so I look for not too long in the future, they'll probably be opening it up and uh right there off of Stafford Road as you go in, on the other side of the road where the possible tuck stop will be going in. So they're developing that area and the city's done approved here a while back the funding to, to upgrade all the sewer lines and everything on that side. And they're in the process of doing that right now. I was up there the other day. I went to the Rantil City meeting the other night. Uh, they have really are to put the things together down there. It's a lot more organized. And uh, things are moving a lot smoother right now with the board down there. I'm impressed with that. Uh, they did, I've been working with them and they, they had to, they put together a uh emergency water supply plan and they've been working with our Emergency Management Department here and uh KDHT and they've quite lengthy uh emergency supply plant they've put together and working with real water districts, which supplies the water. I think it's gonna be a real beneficial thing for the city. Uh, one other thing, uh, I know I, I mentioned to you a while back that been working with them to kind of put their water purse and make it one between a couple towns down there. Well, it kind of got the discussion going and Rick probably knows, uh, all the smaller towns now are talking to each other about something they can do jointly for uh maybe a, a ordinance person to work for all the small towns. And on April the seventeenth, if any of you are interested, uh, to Richmond City Hall at seven o'clock, there'll be a meeting of all the small towns and a person that they're working with to possibly fill that position. And it'd be something that could all of them share the cost and, and have one person to help uh officiate uh ordinances in all their towns. So I know it's something that's still in the process, but they have met with, with a judge here in town a week or two ago and discussed their options and things. So it sounds like it's gonna be a real good deal for all of them. I know, I didn't mention it, but Wellsville, Rantil both uh discussing the, our cleanup deal coming up and the cities are preparing and getting their dumpsters all ready and, and notifying everybody in, in the towns that is coming up. Uh, one other thing I might mention that they, I mentioned before that they're gonna have their Fourth of July in Rantil. They always have it the Saturday before the fourth, to not compete with everybody else's Fourth of July. Uh, they're having the same people they've used in years past. They put on a great fireworks show if you've never been. Uh, this year they're gonna, another gentleman is donating, bringing in a band and a grandstand and gonna provide country and western music in a band that night. And the city's providing a free barbecue. They'll put on hamburgers and hot dogs and baked beans and coleslaw and so forth. And uh, uh, hopefully they gather up enough food to feed everybody that's coming. But they've wanted to make sure the commissioners knew about it and you're all invited to come to that. They put on a great deal. It's right there in the city park. I did attend the uh Fire Chiefs meeting. I mentioned maybe the other day that I'd done that. But I'll go over a couple things. Uh, they got some real interesting things. Uh, all the commissioners, uh, Janet probably, you know, hears them at their meetings, you know, about the, the radio programming and a lot of things I didn't know, 'cause I wasn't here when you guys put it all in. So it was interesting for me to, for them to kind of catch me up. And it sounds like that uh, uh, it's going over really good and all the fire departments are really pleased. I said, and uh mutual aid agreements, they discussed all them with everybody. Uh, ambulance service is there and the ambulance service uh introduced all the training programs. They're gonna be offering to uh emergency management and first responders and uh, and getting them signed up. Um, they're gonna be putting on a safety day. They're kind of working with that a little bit. It's gonna be in June, like they have every year, invite all the fire departments, the police department, ambulance service, emergency paramedics. They've had them out here to Orson Park and like this, that's not gonna be available uh with the new dental office that's going in. So they're looking at two or three other places. I think they spoke with Walmart and a couple of other places, trying to get a, a area big enough. It'll be about four hours long. Sounds to me like it'd be like nine to one. And they're gonna provide some kind of a meal for participants. Uh, the people that wanna go and, and uh view all their up-to-date services and ask questions. And I think they're doing a good job. So that's all I got.
This Friday, I met uh an extraordinary group of people. Um, I met the men and women that work for our Public Works Department. I met the blade operators and uh these guys are, this is according to their supervisor, worked more hours than he could really legally ask them to work, but they did not want to stop because they wanted to make sure that the roads were open um for emergencies and for people to get to work. And then four days later, they did it again when we had another snow event. And it seems like it's always on the weekend. Um, so while we were all, we're home with our kids, they were out on the graders and the snowplows, making sure our roads were open. And then I met the guys and the gals that drove trucks that when those um calls came in about those uh frost boils and impassable roads, they were out there hauling rock out there to make those roads passable. And yes, sometimes it was big rock um because you gotta put the big rock down as a base before you can put the regular road rock down. And I met the guys from the shop that kept those equipment running so that they could be out there getting those roads cleaned. And then these are the same people that are now having an almost impossible task to try to bring those roads back to where we'd like them to be. And I just give them all the kudos in the world because it really was an extraordinary winter and they went above and beyond. Uh, I even took them chocolate 'cause I think, yeah, anyway. Uh, and then last night I met, or not, Wednesday night I was at the Princeton um city council meeting. Um, they are gonna have their new playground hopefully in place the first weekend of July. Um, they do have their new L, LTD lights out. They're, they, they, I don't know, they think that they don't give as much light out as the regular lights do. So they're still, still trying to decide if they like them or not. And, and they've completed some improvements to the community building and um, and if anybody has a place to use a, a viscous engraved breakfast. And, and if anybody has a place to use a biscuits engraved breakfast on the Fourth of May, they'll have a, a community event on, at the community building on the Fourth, seven in the morning.
Where are they putting their playground, Ian?
It's going to be right next to the community building. So it's the post office, then the community building, and then that's right there, right next to that.
I want to echo what Ian said. I've been out and about northeast part of the county. Finally got dry enough where the blade operators could actually do the job right. And they're getting, getting caught up with the roads out there and commend them for the work they're trying to do in, in difficult conditions. But Montana Road's a lot better, Stafford Road's a lot better. So they're, they're getting around, and the people are very patient and understanding about the bad weather. And I think things are improving. I really appreciate the work of Public Works, and everyone's helping out with that, that cause. That's all I have, Rick.
Hey, Saturday, I attended Prairie Paul's' board retreat. It was four hours. A lot of, of information was, was talked about. They talked about what they accomplished in twenty eighteen, talked about some of their goals, strategic planning for the future, and some ways they may reach those goals. They've got a very passionate board, got a lot of, a lot of energy with that board, and a lot of people putting a lot of hours into, out there. And their volunteer numbers are just amazing, that they can get that many people to volunteer. But anyway, that was Saturday afternoon. And then Monday night, I attended Williamsburg City Council. It was typical city council for a small city. They talked about a water fill station they wanted to put in. Just discussion on to have them get to that point where they're going to do it. They're just trying to decide if it would work out. Of course, their streets are in the same condition that the, our roads are. And they talked about the streets and ditches and what they're going to do to try to get them back in shape. They did make a motion to start, start on them, start putting rock down. They approved some money, changed it from one to another, so they could buy rock and start rocking some of their streets and working on those. They talked about what Don said, the roundtable discussion with the other towns that's coming up. And attending that, and hopefully that works out for all the cities. They all have an issue with, with ordinances and animals, and hopefully this helps them get to the, a point where they can take care of that. Talked about issuing a bid for a sidewalk there by their park. And they talked about insurance renewal and the spring cleanup that's coming up. And then yesterday morning, I attended the FCD's Executive Board Meeting. There were several people gone. The school was doing some testing, and some of the people from there was not able to attend. And there wasn't too many there, so it was a very short meeting. Had a couple strategic plan committee updates. Was also, talked about the director search is still ongoing and what they're doing with that. And that's pretty much what I've been to since the last meeting. Did you have something? You look like you wanted to say something. So anyway, upcoming events, April the tenth, we have commission meetings, next thing I see. Anything else? The joint luncheon is later on in the month. Okay, anybody have anything else? Where is the form that you actually need signed by all of us?
I have one, I'll get it signed.
Make sure everybody signs before we, we leave, okay? With that, I would look for a motion to adjourn. Have a motion for a second?
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yeah.
Commissioner Waymire? Chair Howard?
Yes.
We're adjourned.